Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the September 1st, 2022, meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. I have asked Commissioner Brunson if he'd lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Rofoski to lead us in the pledge.
Father God, we come to you tonight thanking you for your goodness, your mercy, and your love for us. Father, we thank you that you are an omnipotent God and that all of our issues are in your hands. And Father, we pray that all of our actions will bring honor and glory to you. Father, we pray especially tonight for those that find themselves homeless, those that find themselves with a mental illness. Father, help us to be good stewards for them and their plight in life. Father, we thank you for our Glen County government. We thank you for the great employees that we have. And Father, we pray especially for our first responders, keep them safe, put your protective arms around them in all that they do to help us and be a safe county. Father, we pray that everything we do tonight would bring honor and glory to you, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up tonight is our public comment period, and we have one speaker coming before us tonight, Mr. Julian Smith. If you'll come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. My wife and I have enjoyed a home on St. Simon's for 30 years. I'm about to turn 85. In doubt, I have more than 15 or 20 good years to talk sense to you and future county commissioners. And this is the last time I can address you during the public comment period this year, but I'll stick around for some public hearings this evening. Now, this evening, I have two topics on my mind. Here's my first topic. Last week, local emergency management officials had a meeting at the Glen County Emergency Management Center, the one you want to supplement with a new public safety multi-use facility for emergency operations costing about $12 million on your SPOS 22 wish list. According to an article in the Brunswick News, and this is a direct quote, although residents may be clamoring to return home after a mandatory evacuation, a safe environment must be restored first, and power and other utility crews get three times as much work done in the time before evacuees return, one official said, unquote. But you and your staff have refused to survey the county to find out how many residents refuse or fail to evacuate before Hurricanes Matthew and Irma in 2016 and 2017. You have refused to find out why they didn't evacuate, or why they couldn't evacuate, and why they may refuse to evacuate in the future or be unable or unwilling to do so. You have refused to consider what might happen if a fast-moving hurricane floods the tourist causeway and the evacuation route to the west of Brunswick. Whether or not the voters reject SPOS 2022 in November, and I hope they do, I urge you to abandon plans for a new public safety multi-use facility and instead start planning now as to how to provide shelter in place and stockpile emergency supplies on the islands and low-lying parts of the mainland. Moving on to my second topic, you have wasted your time and that of the public by refusing to allow more than a few members of the public to speak in opposition to some of the items on your new SPOS wish list. Yes, I know, you had town halls where you provided information, but you didn't leave any time at some or much time at the rest for the public to speak. You wasted tax dollars on a survey of convenience, that's a term of art, survey of convenience, months ago, a survey that did not reach ordinary residents of Glen County, a survey that in effect excluded most persons of color, most residents living near or below the poverty line. And now you plan to waste even more time next week at the Brunswick Public Library, where staff will hold what the county manager described in an email to me as, quote, "a staff-led opportunity for members of the public to come in and meet with staff on the proposed projects for SPOS," unquote. Although Mr. Fallon made it clear the public will not be able to speak in public for every one of that event you hear, he did promise to let me know if you, the county commission, quote, "would like to hold future public meetings on the subject," unquote. He made that promise a week ago. I have heard nothing more about any future public meetings on this subject. Gentlemen, thank you for giving me this time, and I will remain here at the podium in the unlikely event any of you would care to respond. If you have anything to say, please speak up loud and clear so I can hear. I have spoken for 4 minutes and 58 seconds, 2 seconds left. No one else is scheduled to speak. I would love an opportunity to speak for them, to ask you questions, or have you answer questions, or at least object to what I have just said. So be my guest. If not, I will speak away.
Well, Mr. Smith, we thank you for your comments.
I cannot hear you, sir.
Thank you for your comments, but we have a full agenda tonight, and that is your five minutes.
Yes, you do.
And you know the protocol here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agendas?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agendas, general business and finance, with the exception of any items any commissioner wishes to pull for discussion.
Pension.
And pension, I'm sorry.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, second by Commissioner Rofoski, to approve our consent agenda for general business, pension, and finance. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Moving into public hearings for an abandonment, public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with 5 minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this matter is greatly appreciated. Item number 35, consider the abandonment of the existing paved road on 2020 and 300 Needwood Road, along with any public access rights that have been created, with the requirement that the final plat reflecting the attached approved preliminary plat is approved and recorded within 12 months of the date of this approval. And it looks like we have Mr. Andrews. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Andrews, county engineer. This item number 35 on the agenda. The Needwood Road abandonment before you is a bit of a unique abandonment. What this is, is a section of paved road that the county paved in 25 years ago, in 1997, as part of a larger road paving project we were doing at the time. We have those big county-wide road paving projects. At this time, we were doing, instead of resurfacing, we were doing a lot of paving of dirt roads. This particular road got paved, and we never received the right-of-way created around it. And so it's been a paved road that the county has maintained when it needed it over the years, has provided public access back to this portion of property east of Highway 17. The current property owners have asked to come in and donate right-of-way to the county around this road. As we were working through the process of creating that right-of-way, the current owners elected that they would prefer to have it as private right-of-way, not no longer available to the public, but have private right-of-way since it serves only a couple of lots on the end of that road. This item, and y'all's action, would abandon any rights the public has to the infrastructure, the asphalt, the base material itself, and any public access rights that were created when we put that down. The follow-on to this will be, come before you, the acceptance of a final plat that will create right-of-way over a small portion of the, they're going to create a small portion of public right-of-way that will provide an area for us, for us, the county, to install a cul-de-sac if it's needed, and create a portion of private right-of-way that will then be the property owner's responsibility to maintain and upkeep. This is located, this is the area of abandonment. Needwood Road is on Highway 17, north of where Harry Driggers and 17 intersect. Needwood Church is down here. It's just this tail end, better represented here, is this section in question. The plat we just saw that would create the abandonment that is requested for you this evening would be over just the section that will be created as private right-of-way. This is the existing pavement and road as it is, generally standing at the western end of the right-of-way looking east. And this is the end of the pavement. Over the years, there's been problems with trash and folks littering at the end of this right-of-way that has, the property owners out there would like to be able to corral that and correct it by restricting access and/or limiting people's access to it. Utilities had no comments, no opposition to this, received public comments. The only public comment I received after posting the site was one of the neighbors, just wanted information or wanted information about what it was pertaining to as they were having some trouble further up the road with troubles with one of their neighbors. Possible actions that would be available to the board would be to approve it as proposed, approve it with additional conditions, continue to a later date, deny it, or to direct staff as to how to proceed before you as a possible motion for approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Andrews. Any questions for Mr. Andrews?
Very limited, from what I understand. There hasn't been a lot of maintenance need, but we did treat it as a county road, so if there was any maintenance needs, we would have been on it. There's a, if I may, there's a drainage ditch that runs along and crosses under and continues on that the county does maintain, and I believe we've maintained this area more than most. Up the road on Needwood, close to Highway 17, Needwood is, if you're familiar with the area, is the one with the big, there's a big oak tree up towards Highway 17. We've had to work on that, in that area, to mitigate for that oak tree.
So you said something about the county didn't get something transferred over with this?
That's correct.
Even though it was paved?
At the time, as I understand, the practice that we were doing at the time was identifying roads, that areas to pave, and that was predominantly ones that we had been maintaining on our grading, maintaining as dirt roads. Some of the dirt roads, we had right-of-way rights too already, some we didn't. The ones that were on our list to pave that we didn't have right-of-way on, we had, we were trying to pursue and acquire that right-of-way as we could. This one, I was not able to find out why that right-of-way was never either conveyed or created, but we couldn't find any evidence of it having been done. So when the owners asked about it, I couldn't find any, so they said, well, they would go ahead and create it in the section they're involved with so that it would be squared away there.
Is it the same owner 25 years ago?
I do not believe so. But in that they're currently the owner, they can convey the right-of-way to the county or create right-of-way.
Any other questions?
Just one for the attorney. Aaron, is, obviously, this is not like an unopened road that the county has. There's county dollars have been used to pave that. Is this a legal action that can be done with taxpayer dollars already invested in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Aaron, does it then become a county road because we have maintained it for 25 years?
It does have the presumption of a prescriptive easement, where over time, the county's used it or maintained it. Does have a element of that where the county could have acquired that through that prescriptive rights. In this case, you know, it's unclear what interest the county has actually in it, so staff thought it would be best to bring it forward in this capacity rather than say the county doesn't have any interest in it. So the abandonment was deemed to be the best process for the county to relinquish its rights it had in the property. So this is, so yes, you can acquire that through 25 years of use and pavement, but again, this is the best process for us to, for the county to say.
So we are giving up our rights then? Is that the way you see it?
That's correct. That's correct.
Any other questions? All right, well, this is a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to come up and speak in opposition to this abandonment, please come forward and speak. State your name for the record, please. Any opposition? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close out that portion. Anyone that wants to come and speak in favor of this abandonment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I know this road. I went out recently, took a look at it. I think this makes sense. What I see on the application makes sense. It might also make sense if you are absolutely sure that the tax assessments on these properties will increase, if that is appropriate. You might want to consult with Mr. Mumford on that. Is it possible that you can also charge something for giving up the right-of-way or whatever you're giving up? I'm interested in this issue in part because I own a property at the dead end, the north end of Canal Road. Old Canal Road ends where Harry Driggers dropped a huge subdivision across the road. And garbage trucks turn around in my driveway. I pick up litter there. Sometimes people sort of camp out in their cars at night, et cetera. So I would be very disposed to coming before this board in the near future and saying, let me have the last 100 feet or so of the road. I won't close it off. The garbage truck will still be able to pull down there and then back into my driveway and turn around. But the county is not making any use of the road. I'm keeping the ditch clean. I'm having the right-of-way on the other side of the road cut on a regular basis. The county doesn't do that. So there are probably other places where things could and should be abandoned. So I support this application. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor?
Commissioners, Gary Neville with SHUP Surveying. I prepared the survey for this and a little bit of the history of why this is coming before you. Someone is wishing to purchase the property, but what they would like to do also is build an additional residence out there. So it would require a subdivision of one of the six-and-a-half acre pieces, or actually, they're buying 13 acres and they want to have three lots instead of two. And so therefore, I was looking for a right-of-way or an access easement that actually served the property, and there was none. So that's when I contacted Paul about what we needed to do, because we can only serve four lots off a private access easement, and we're already doing that right now. So therefore, we're going to a private right-of-way. There is only one residence at the end of this road that I know of. It's got a single wide trailer that looks like it's hadn't been used in a lot of years, but as far as I know, there is nobody living on this portion of the paved road at all. So, and respectfully request you approve this abandonment, and we'll be back later to plat the right-of-way further back.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? State your name for the record, please.
My name is Jim K., and I am the purchaser that Gary spoke of. My family and I would like to go back on that property and build three modest homes, and we fully support this, and we also understand that the upkeep of the road will be our responsibility once this is approved, and we are quite comfortable with that as well. So we fully support it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the abandonment of the existing paved road on 220 and 300 Needwood Road, along with any public access rights that have been created, with the requirement that the final plat reflecting the attached approved preliminary plat is approved and recorded within 12 months of the date of this approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number 26 is a public hearing on land use. Item number 36, what did I say?
26.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Public hearing for land use, CUP 5130, 110 East 27th Street, Sea Island, a conditional use permit. Consider a conditional use permit for the installation of native landscaping seaward of the development setback line pursuant to zoning ordinance section 727 Beach and Dune Protection District. Property is located at 110 East 27th Street, Sea Island, and includes a portion of the adjacent property parcel number 05-00178 and a portion of parcel number 05-05941. Property is zoned R12, R9, and Beach and Dune Protection District. Daniel Bucy, agent for Timothy Costello, Happiest Camper LLC, and SIA Prop Co. One LLC owners. And I guess Ms. Leaf?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Stephanie Leaf, Community Development Department. So we're waiting to see if the, yeah, we have a little bit of technical issue. We've got the presentation on the computer desktop screen, but it's not projecting to the big screen. I think IT is working on that. Would you like me to wait, or would you like me to go ahead and just kind of give an overview?
Why don't you just go ahead and start with an overview?
Since you have this in your packet, so this one as well as the next item, they're both conditional use permits for native landscaping seaward of the development setback line on Sea Island. So this first one, if you may recall, the commission earlier this year had revised the Beach and Dune Protection Ordinance at section 727 of the code, and you changed it from a 40-foot setback a 40-foot setback to a 25-foot setback. However, any landscaping within seaward of that 25-foot setback line still requires a conditional use permit, so that language stayed in the code. So, that's what this project is, is native landscaping. The IPC did look at this at their last meeting, I think it was August 16th, and they did unanimously recommend approval of this conditional use permit. And Ms. Rachel Strickland from Sea Island is a landscape architect, and she's here this evening if you have any questions. And the recommendation is to, a series of motions, possible motions for you, of course, are to approve it, deny it, remand it back, or defer it, and the recommended motion is to approve that. I'm happy to answer any question.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Leaf. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this tonight that would need the presentation on the board? You want to wait for the presentation to come forward? Ms. Frazier, if Commissioner Fendig brought you his tablet for you to look at, would that suffice, or do you want to wait for, see if we can get the screen up? Is it just this conditional use, or is it our hardware is not communicating, so the next three would be?
Yeah, so it affects, yeah, the next two public hearings as well. I know Quincy's working on it, it looks like there's maybe a connection issue between what, the projector and the computer.
And Mr. Attorney, can we move forward to the other items on the agenda and then come back to that? All right, well, we'll try to move forward then. We will come back to the public hearings. Item number 39 is appointments. Consider the appointment of two new additional citizen members to serve on the police advisory panel per the amended and restated bylaws for the Glen County Police Advisory Panel. The term will begin immediately upon appointment and end on July 20, 2023. We have five names there for presentation. Do I hear any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, nominate Abra Latney Reed.
All right, and does this need a second? Okay, do we have another nomination?
Mr. Chairman, nominate Lucas Ramirez.
All right, and Mr. Attorney, can we take both of these as one? Do we have any other nominations? All right, we have two names before us, Abra Latney Reed and Lucas Ramirez. All in favor of these two appointments, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Under general business, consider an ordinance regarding an amendment to the Glen County Code of Ordinances, Glen County, Georgia, to amend section 2 and 3 of the liquor malt beverage and wine ordinance to allow golf carts to serve malt beverages on golf carts. On golf courses.
Mr. Chairman, how can a golf cart serve anything? People?
It's the allowance of the serving through a golf cart bender.
That's not what it says.
It's close enough. Thank you, sir.
Okay, come close enough to golf and order your car. Thank you.
All right, any discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just a little background. Had several golf course properties contact with me and said that they wanted to be able to serve on their beverage carts, beer or beer and wine. I had Community Development kind of do a check through all of our golf course communities, kind of what was going on, and some were doing it and thought it was under the premises license of the clubhouse, and going back with the county attorney, we found out that that's two separate issues, premises. So, anyway, I had the county attorney just kind of review everything and reach back out to most of the, most all of the golf course communities to see what they would like, and they were in favor of doing that, and so that's why this came together.
All right, Commissioners, anything else discussion on this? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance amendment as presented.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Raffowski, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 41, election of a vice chairman for the remainder of the 2022 year.
Mr. Chairman, it would be my honor to nominate Commissioner O'Quinn to finish out as the vice chairman.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, and two seconds. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Yeah.
That is unanimous. Thank you. And it looks like maybe just in time. Quincy? Just in time, we're ready. All right, Ms. Leaf.
Go ahead and show these slides.
And Ms. Leaf, let me interrupt you. Just to repeat, this is a public hearing for CUP 5130 for 110 East 27th Street, Sea Island, for a conditional use permit.
Okay, this is CUP 5130, and as I mentioned, this is native landscaping seaward of the 25-foot development setback, the Beach and Dune Protection District. This is the property on Sea Island where the star is located. Here's an aerial view of the property, and there is the house under construction right now. Here's a survey of the property. And then this is the native landscaping that's shown in the green. This is the subject property, and then they are putting some of it in the private right-of-way of Sea Island, so we also have authorization from them to go through this process. So, this arrow is pointing to, this segment is the 25, this is the 25-foot line, and so this is the area that's seaward. This is the dune, and that's the house under construction. The Island Planning Commission on August 16th unanimously recommended approval. These are your possible actions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, anything before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to come forward and speak against CUP 5130, please come forward, state your name for the record, and you have five minutes.
What I am opposed to is removing the existing native vegetation, the full length of Sea Island, just as was done on the Sea Island Spit. We see that most of the spit is now washed away. A lot of it's right at Gould's Inlet, for those of you who know that. And so, my objection is ripping out native vegetation that's holding the shoreline and planting a few plants that are called native vegetation. I realize this is not the first one of these applications, and I do oppose these at the Island Planning Commission as well, but I do hope you will realize that the more you rip out the vegetation, the less shore you will have, and we can see that so beautifully illustrated at the Sea Island Spit. There's really hardly any left of what it looked like. It's maybe a third land mass of what it was 10 years ago. So, take a look at the aerial photos and see why I'm objecting. Thank you.
I'm a resident of St. Simon's Island. I too object for the similar reasons that Ms. Frazier talked about, but gentlemen, this is just another example of where, if this is approved, there's another death by a thousand cuts on what we're doing to our environment around the islands. There's really no reason to take out the vegetation that's there, need to trim it back and whatever, but the root system is what's important. So, I would suggest that this come back with some modification to incorporate existing vegetation and whatever new, as opposed to removal and replanning. Losing the beach, Mother Nature, the good Lord says our beaches move south, it doesn't matter whether we use Johnson rocks or other plants or whatever, but if you want to accelerate it, this type of action taken by the county approving this type of modification to the beach and the dunes is just one more way of accelerating the growth, and we're going to spend millions of dollars to put rocks in trying to save it elsewhere. So, if this is upstream of where the rocks go, rocks will catch it, but it's going away one way or another. I suggest you just leave it alone and add plants instead of taking it out and putting new in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith again. I also object to what is proposed here. I know you're going to probably vote in favor of it. You've been allowing this, and DNR, et cetera, has been allowing this for years. Now, I've been walking the beach on Sea Island for a long time, back and forth, because I like to walk and I need the exercise. I've also been flying over Sea Island for many years with James Holland, who has not been up in the air for the last year or so, and I hope to be back up in the air with him soon. This is really beyond rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic. I can understand why the people who own these multi, multi, multi-million dollar second homes want to do this, because they want to be landscaped just like their neighbors. This is no better than high school students going after the latest fad. To remove native vegetation so you can put in native vegetation is silly. It's vain. It's stupid, and people have been getting away with it, but thank goodness, we have sea level rise, we have some storms coming at us that will wash away some of this shame, and shame on you for helping to facilitate this, if you vote in favor of this one and the next one. So, I'm going to save you a little time, Commissioner Fendig. You all managed to get through the first four pages in 10 minutes, and you said you had a busy agenda. Yeah, busy work. Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to come forward and speak in opposition to CUP 5130? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close out that portion. Those that would wish to speak in favor of CUP 5130, please come forward, state your name for the record, please. Those that would speak in favor. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on this, CUP 5130, and Commissioners, it's back to you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, a couple of things. As you know, the DNR did change the line from 40 feet back to 25 feet under state, with the state law. The county at that time had an option to adopt that 25 feet, or even some of our fellow Commissioners wanted to get out of having these hearings with these issues. The only reason I've suggested that we keep it is that to give neighbors an opportunity to come before the commission, if landscaping plans or development in those areas were of concern to the neighbors, and there would be a venue to express it, and the county commission render a judgment, yea or nay, and then it goes on to the DNR. So, it's, this commission did agree to keep this process in place to allow citizens to come up and speak for or against these applications. Second thing is that Commissioner O'Quinn and I had the great honor and privilege to grow up on the beach when you could walk by dunes, sand dunes, down to the beach. That was the case for my relatives that had the Bruce property, you could walk. Then in 1964, Hurricane Dora came and carved off the beaches of St. Simon's, and President Johnson had rocks put in as a protective revetment so that the natural course of property erosion would be taken away, and it would be protected. Good example of that where that's not happening too much is on the north end of Jekyll Island. If you walk Driftwood Beach or look at any pictures, that area was left natural, and the ocean and storms have eroded in, it's almost made a little Jekyll Island on the north end. So, on this particular property, though, there are rocks in front of it, there's a rock revetment, and I've lived all of my life behind a rock revetment on several locations on the beach. Planting behind the rocks is not going to impact what happens on the other side of those rocks. It's something that we live with, and I dare say, I can't imagine what the island would look like if the rocks weren't in place. Of course, the bad side effect of that is, is it stops the normal movement of sand all the way up and down the beaches as we used to enjoy before 1960s. So, I just want to just make sure that, first, the public understands there are rocks in front of this property, and I'd be glad to make a motion unless Commissioners want to say anything else.
I had a question, Stephanie. So, is it true that if you remove the plants, you don't replant, then you lose this soil over time from storms and other things? Is that your understanding?
Well, the new landscaping will, you know, reestablish, you know, root system and provide some stabilization there, so, I mean, I would, because, I mean, if they were taking it out and not replacing it with any kind of vegetation, I mean, that would definitely be a serious issue. I'm not sure if Ms. Strickland wants to comment anymore on that.
But they plan to put additional, they just don't like these particular plants.
Correct, yeah, so they're taking, exactly, they're removing that and then replacing it with- So they're taking, exactly, they're removing that and then replacing it with, yeah, different native landscaping. But the code does require it has to be native landscaping, so it can't be, you know, anything that's not considered native to our area.
Do you know how long it would take for them to take root and help stabilize, restabilize?
Yeah, I do not know.
Could we hear from the landscape folks? Are they here, understood, yeah, exactly what you plan to do to address this situation? Thank you.
And state your name for the record, please.
Rachel Strickland, landscape architect of Sea Island. We're not ripping out any native landscape. We are taking out the invasive landscape and replacing it with more native. Sea Island did a revegetation along the beach several years ago, and we're keeping that, adding to it. We're taking out the invasive sod, I think it's Saint Augustine, and replacing it with Pass Phalen, which is native sod. It requires hardly any water, no fertilizer. I mean, it's native, so it's indigenous to this area. We're keeping our pine trees. We're just not, we're not taking out any native plants, so I don't know where that came from. But, so, grasses usually take about six months, so you can just irrigate, like a temporary irrigation, along the beach.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve CUP 5130.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Bronson, and second by Commissioner Rofalski. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 37, CUP 5133. Sir?
The application of the state's moving native landscaping.
Sir, it's been passed. Thank you, Mr. Bork. Item number 37, CUP 5133, 117 East 18th Street, Sea Island, conditional use permit. Consider a conditional use permit for the installation of native landscaping seaward development setback line pursuant to zoning ordinance section 727, Beach and Dune Protection District. Property is located at 117 East 18th Street, Sea Island, and includes improvements in the right-of-way of 18th Street. Parcel numbers 05-00268 and a portion of 05-05941. Property is on R12 and R9 in Beach and Dune Protection District. Daniel Busey, Agent for Paul Sheridan, Sea Shark LLC, and SIA Prop Co. One LLC owners. And again, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. This is CUP 5133. This is 117 East 18th Street, also on Sea Island. This is another application for native landscaping, 25, within the 25-foot development setback line. This is the property here, where the star is located. Here's the aerial view of the property. They are currently doing extensive remodel on the house there. The survey of the property. And here is their proposed landscape plan. And then this yellow arrow points to where that 25-foot setback line is. And here's a couple photos of the property with the remodeling. And the IPC on August 16th did recommend approval of this application in a 6-0 vote. Vice Chair Brock recused herself from this application. And these are your possible actions, possible motion. I know that the agent, Mr. Busey, is not here tonight. I'm not sure if there's anyone else in the audience that's representing the owner, so we may not have a representative for this application this evening. Mr. Busey is not here this evening. I'm not sure if there's anyone else in the audience representing the owner, so we may not have an agent here representing it. But I don't think there's any reason why they can still consider it.
Stephanie, I see two possible motions. If I'm on the right one...
Oh, okay.
Wait a minute, I may be on the wrong one.
The next application does have two alternatives.
Okay.
Mr. Attorney? Do we, does the agent or representative have to be here for this to move forward? Okay. All right. So, any discussion, Commissioners, before we go into the public hearing? All right, this is item number 38, CUP 50, no, I'm sorry. This is CUP 5133, 117 East 18th Street. This is a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition to CUP 5133, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Jane Fraser again, from Sea Island. This is only two blocks from where I live, so weakening the shoreline to only two blocks away is distressing to me. If you want to put the picture back up, you will see that everything's been ripped out. There is no native vegetation. They came in earlier and tore everything out. And if you visited, have all of you visited these properties before voting on them tonight?
Continue with the comments, please, Ms. Fraser.
So if you had have visited, you would have realized that all the native vegetation has been torn out, leaving it defenseless, as it were. And so, of course, I'm opposed to this one, just as I was the last. And thank you, thank you for your concern. I do understand that 727 got changed. As you can imagine, I was opposed to that. 20 feet doesn't give us much protection from the ocean, and we may be looking at that pretty soon. Thank you.
Anyone else that would come up and speak in opposition?
Julian Smith again. And I want to thank Commissioner Fendig for his little history lesson. The Johnson rocks are the rocks that keep on giving, because as the waves hit them and undermine them, the county and the state now have to spend more money, haul in more rocks to put on top. The Johnson rocks don't protect the shoreline. They cause some parts of the shoreline damage to some parts. If you look at what has happened in front of King and Prince, you will see that because of the Johnson rocks there, at High Tide, there is no beach. The Johnson rocks caused erosion of the beach. This is something that has been pointed out all up and down the eastern seacoast in similar situations. Now, Mr. Johnson, President Johnson did not give these rocks to us as a free gift. He got it because Carl Vinson was pissed at him. He did it because Dick Russell, Senator Russell, was annoyed at him, at LBJ. Because LBJ was trying to pass a civil rights act. He was trying to get voting rights for African-Americans, which is not popular in the South.
Mr. Smith, if we can keep this as it pertains.
This is relevant to what you're doing. So you are perpetuating, you are perpetuating a memorial to segregation. You didn't even know it. I'm very interested in this issue, because I was on the other side in the election of 1964, when Johnson was desperate to defeat Goldwater. I don't think Goldwater would have been a bad president. I worked in his first campaign for the Senate. He was a family friend, and I'm a Democrat saying that. Lyndon Johnson led us down deep into the swamp of Vietnam, got us deeper and deeper. How can you sit here, Mr. Fendig, and talk about this so-called gift? I looked this particular gift in the horse's mouth. Thank you.
Anyone else that would speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of CUP 5133, please come forward and state your name. Those that would speak in favor. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on this, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve CUP 5133 as presented.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, second by Commissioner Rofalski to approve CUP 5133. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 38, CUP 5040, Friendly Express Conditional Use Permit. Consider a conditional use permit for a new convenience store, gas station, and associated parking and infrastructure at 5514 Frederica Road, St. Simons Island, parcel number 04-05399. The property is on plan development district PD, ZM 1445. And an automobile service station is a conditional use in the PD. Brian Hunt, Robert Civil Engineering, Agent for Bradley Crosby, Lewis &amp; Rollison Incorporated applicant, and 50 Oaks Group LLC owner. And Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. CUP 5040, Friendly Express Conditional Use Permit. And this property is located in this location. So this is Frederica Road. Benny's Red Barn Restaurant is just to the north of here. So they are looking to get a conditional use permit to allow the use of an automobile service station. So they are proposing approximately 4,700 square foot convenience store, and then a fuel pumps, six fuel pumps is what they're proposing to do. They are required to get a conditional use permit. They are zoned plan development district, it's the Red Barn Plan Development District, but the commercial uses that are listed in the plan development district refer back to the county's local commercial district. So under local commercial, a use, an automobile service station is a use that requires a conditional use permit. So if they were just going to do a convenience store, that would fall under, you know, a grocery or another use that's permitted. But because they have a fuel pump, that's really what triggers this service station use and the conditional use permit. They also have a site plan that they're required to have as well. This was presented to the Islands Planning Commission on August 16th, and it was approved with one opposition and one member recused. They, of course, that site plan is only valid if their conditional use permit is approved. So, sorry, this is kind of light, it's not coming up real strong, but this is a local commercial zoning that just specifies automobile service station. So this is their conception elevation, so they're proposed for this site. This is elevations for the fuel, the canopies over the fuel pumps. There, this is their proposed site plan. So this is Frederica Road along here. They are proposing two Ingress-Egress. These are the fuel pumps, this location, the canopy, this is the convenience store. As part of the plan development district, they are required to have a green space and a certain amount of open space on the property. So they have shown this in the rear of the property. They've allocated this as kind of a vent area, green space, farmer's market area, which was specifically outlined in the PD as something they should have on the site. They're also required to have a tree plan for the St. Simons Tree Canopy Preservation Ordinance. So, as I mentioned, both of these were approved by the IPC. And just a little bit more on the tree plan. So on this site, or adjacent to the site, there is a county right-of-way tree that the applicants are requesting to remove. The tree board typically would review something of this nature, but as you may be aware, the tree board is currently inactive, and so this falls to the Board of Commissioners to approve this. And so because this application was coming before you, we've also included this particular request. So back on, I'm just going to go back to the site plan real quick and show you. So on the site plan, they had, these are the two Ingress-Egress points. This is the northern one closer to Benny's Red Barn. And the tree is located right here. And then I have a little better view. So here's just zoomed in where the red sorrel is. This is the tree. This is a photo of the tree on the left. The sidewalk that's along Frederica does go around this tree to preserve it. So if, so there's two different motions that are in, that are on the screen when we get to that point. If you, if the board does approve removing the tree, then their access could stay as it is. If the board declines approval of removal of the tree, then they would need to amend their site plan to redesign this particular Ingress-Egress point. This is a live oak tree, and it's 22 inches diameter at breast height. And then there's a video the applicant submitted that I'm going to try to play for you, I see was helpful in getting this going. and recommended approval of the conditional use permit. And these are proposed motions. So this is under the conditional use permit section of the code. These are your possible motions that you could have. And then we have included two possible motions. The first one, if you approve removing the tree, then the first motion would include approval to remove the tree within the right-of-way. And the second motion would be if you decline to approve removal of the tree, it's requiring that the site plan is modified to revise the Ingress-Egress in order to save that tree or protect the tree. Have any answer any questions you have? Brian Hunt from Robert Civil Engineering is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Stephanie, the question I've gotten today is, what's going to happen to the other service station?
So they had stated at the last meeting that they, I think they do plan to put another business eventually on that site, but that would be closed. They wouldn't have the two stations open at the same time. So my understanding from the applicant at the IPC meeting was that they will be closing that existing service station, and that would become another commercial use. I'm not sure of the long-term plans on that, but they will not operate that station. They will close that once this one is opened, is what they stated.
Do they have plans to go ahead and remove the tanks that are in the station that they currently are occupying?
I believe so. Yeah, Mr. Hunt can respond to that more. Yeah, they do plan to remove those.
Any other questions? All right. This is a public hearing for item number 38, CUP 5040. And because I am currently building for 50 Oaks, although I have no participation in this particular project, I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice chairman and let him run this public hearing.
Commissioners, before we start the public hearing, were there any, you have any questions for Ms. Leaf? We're all good on that. Okay, this is a public hearing. We'll ask for those at this time who would like to speak in opposition of this particular conditional use, CUP 5040. Those that are, I apologize. Those that would like to speak against CUP 5040, Friendly Express Conditional Use Permit, please state your name for the record.
My name is Hugh Bork. I recommend that you not approve this application as it's submitted. Not necessarily against the development that they're talking about, but, gentlemen, as we've already seen in exhibit tonight, of the inexact, inappropriate actions...
in which the conditional use application is there. We're not talking about the PD or the ordinance. We're talking about the conditional use parameters that are being, that the application applies for tonight. Specifically, the effect the proposed activity will have on traffic flow along the adjoining streets. If you read the application, or at least the report, it just simply says there's two ingress egress points on the plan. Well, if you look at the current condition and the proposed condition, assuming the existing establishment goes away or is modified, we've had two accidents at Ogglethorpe Road, which is immediately opposite one of the planned egresses for this facility. It's existing there now, and the last accident had ambulance response. I don't know what the condition was of the individual, but Ogglethorpe Road, Lucas Properties, close proximity, South Harrington, and even Windward, it comes out from Sea Palms, right across from the Sea Palms office, is a train wreck there, particularly at lunchtime, when the food trucks go to Sea Palms, and God bless the food trucks, that's the closest place that the labors and workers on the island can come for food from the north end. They either, they've got to go on down, further down island to get the food. So I have no problem with that, but the traffic condition there is atrocious, and this plan that's laid out certainly does not improve, in fact, makes it worse. So one of the items of a conditional use permit is that you guys need to consider what's going on with traffic. Even if they modify the ingress egress because of the oak tree, okay, it doesn't solve the problem. Turning left out of Friendly's today, turning left out of the proposed Friendly's, and turning, excuse me, yeah, turning left out of Friendly's, and turning left off of Ogglethorpe Road headed north in this congestion here, gentlemen, I don't know why you let it go. We need another traffic circle, Mr. Fendick, for this particular location, all right? And particularly when the lights are relieved and the traffic flows north on Frederica, it's horrendous. Coming out tonight, the light at Atlantic and the light at Sea Island Road were both green. I sat at exiting Sea Palms, which is just south of this area, for 10 minutes to get out, safely get out of the neighborhood with the traffic flowing. This is just a little bit further north in there. Five entrances, plus the sixth one that's going to be added because of the new ingress egress. Protective screening is supposed to be part of the application. It just simply says you're going to have buffers, gives you the standard ordinance, right, recitations of what the buffers can be, but the application, per the ordinance for CUP, says the screening needs to be part of the application, not included. Not included, therefore the application is not complete. Could it be? Sure. But why are we bending the rules? Why are we not complying with what the, what the ordinance says for CUP? All right? The number and size of signs, the only thing I saw was this video, which I don't know if it's part of the application or not, but there's no signage. The signage has kicked the can down the road, but the CUP requirement says the signage needs to be part of the application for your consideration as the board to approve the CUP application. I again request the optimization of the tree plan. If you just look at where the island is, the fuel island, et cetera, the public space in the back, if you just move the properties around, the building around on the, on the plot, you'd get a lot more tree conservation than just whack and cut based on where somebody wants to put the building. Looks like it's right now aligned pretty much where the existing building is, just moved north, north a little bit. But that movement, without moving it back on the property, with the island where you have an access basically perpendicular to Frederica, as opposed to the existing island that's parallel to Frederica, is going to really make us an ingested, ingested issue there. Drainage, when we talked about Fifty Oaks, when we've talked about all the places along South Harrington and development, the most of the things on south of, south of South Harrington drain into a common ditch that runs out to an outlet just, just beyond Sunrise Point. With the change of, I assume they're not going to be taking much of the impervious out of the area now. They're going to be adding impervious and whatever. You're dumping more, more water. It's not going to be absorbed, it's not going to be evaporated, it's going to be runoff, it's going to be going into already an overloaded ditch. This is another example of silo decision-making, silo evaluations by the staff and by the applicants. Is it okay for this particular piece of property, but you've added it to the Fifty Oaks, you've added it to about three other developments? So I would recommend that at least it be resubmitted with the appropriate elements for you guys to consider in accordance with the ordinance. If you're going to change the ordinance, fine. If you're not going to comply with it, don't approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Bork. Time, time is up. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition, please state your name for the record.
I'm Julian Smith again. I want to thank Mr. Bork for his comments. I want to thank the Commissioners for allowing him that extra minute. I would like to be able to speak in favor of this application, but I cannot at this point. There are some conditions which should be imposed by you before you approve this, if you ever do. I would recommend, right now, that you consult with the county attorney on whether or not you could, tonight, continue the public hearing, leave the public hearing open. You don't do that, but it's something you could do if you set your mind to it. So, there are some conditions which would need to be imposed. And really, the applicant should ask you to stop your deliberation. Do not deliver, but to come back with a, an amended application. Start the process all over again. There is no rush to build a bigger filling station in this particular location. Now, I drove down there today on my way to this meeting, and during rush hour, and I, yes, it is hard to, if you come out of that, to make a left turn onto Harrington Road. There's not much you can do about that, other than, I bow, what do you call them? Extra, an extra lane in the middle. But that's going to be difficult and extensive. Now, why might I support this application? It's very simple. This is a good location for a grocery store, or for a convenience store, a friendly market, which has a good selection of fresh produce and so on. Really, it should be a grocery store with a filling station. Now, Harris Teeter wanted to have gas pumps by their, by the grocery store. I oppose that. If it comes up again, I will oppose it again. But I think the applicants, who have a lot of land here, should really go back to the drawing board and come up with a higher and best use for this. Now, you guys are not interested in the highest and best use of property, but we're running out of certain kinds of property on St. Simons, so it would be useful to do. And one of the conditions you really should impose has to do with the hours of operation. On page four, item six, we're told, hours and manner of operation. The applicant has not indicated the hours of operation for the convenience store, but the fuel pumps will be 24-hour access if using a credit card at the pump. This is a recipe for disaster. You don't leave pumps unattended in a big new station like this. The pumps should be closed when there is not an attendant. This, this is not rocket science, folks. So, I hope you will, tonight, ask the applicant to withdraw the application, or at the very least, continue the public hearing, leave it open, and let people come back and start all over again, because they're going to be talking about what is basically an amended application. So, you're going to have to advertise that, and so on. Please, do the right thing for once tonight. Well, you, you did it with one other thing. But, don't, don't approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Anyone like to speak in opposition? CUP 5040.
My name is Jeff Kilgore. I have not been opposition to the project on its face, but I did speak, I suppose, against it at the Island Planning Commission meeting for the very same reasons that Mr. Bork articulated. And, just about every time I come to this lecture, and I ask you to follow your ordinances, and more often than not, you fail to do that. I'll go through, no, I'm not. There are a number of things that are missing from this application that's not in compliance with your ordinance. I've asked you countless times to please ensure compliance with your own ordinances. I went through this at the IPC meeting. I'm quite sure they don't know your ordinance, and so they, they didn't know what I was talking about anyway, because they voted unanimously to approve this application. You may commit the same error, but as Mr. Bork said, if you don't like your ordinance, change it. But as long as it's your ordinance, I expect you to follow it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition to CUP 5040? Please state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. I'd just like to mention a couple relevant points.
Name for the record, please, sir.
I'm sorry, Mike Stoykas. I appreciate the history lesson on the Johnson Boulders. It was quite accurate. I think history is an important thing when you're considering these types of projects. And, I would look at the current store, which is approximately, with runoff and everything, probably 80% smaller than the proposed one that is on this plan. And I also would look at the trash that's generated. What the other gentleman said, it is a nice place for people that work on the island that don't have a lot of money to go and eat, but if you all would come by there and walk there or look, or just spend 10 minutes in your car at the hours of between 11 and 2 o'clock, the traffic is crazy. Most of the people that come there litter. These are just practical things that are happening right now. I believe the proposal is for the same friendly that is already there. I could be wrong on that. Same company. I would, it's not very well managed. If you could see all the trash that ends up everywhere, most of the workers that come there are pulling 16 to 20-foot trailers. They do buy fuel, diesel, and such, which obviously is a great service for the community. But, the big thing is the traffic, the trash, the ingress and egress from right across the street, what the other gentleman mentioned, Ogglethorpe. And I believe what he didn't know was, the last time the ambulance was there, it was quite recently, there were three, they were of driving age. It was a golf cart. There were three women, young ladies, that got hit by a car on the bike path there, and it turned the golf court, golf cart over, and it totaled it. It was a red golf cart. I don't know if you all checked the police reports. That's, that's fact. I'm not embellishing that at all. So, the traffic issue is just crazy, left or right, it's crazy there. That's undeniable, because you have Ogglethorpe across the street, and now you're proposing expanding by 80% what is already there. I would, I would say it's triple the size. You also mentioned, the Planning Commission mentioned that the plan was temporary, subject to revisions, correct? That plan that you showed, the nice marketing video, is not set in stone, correct? So it has to be built as just the way it is? The other practical piece, thank you. The other practical piece of information for y'all, the sidewalk right there and bike path, which the island's blessed with, is right next to the road, and they have the white temporary markers glued down. I think tonight I counted seven that have already been knocked down by cars. So what you've had there is you've had a golf cart turnover and totaled with three young ladies in it. Luckily, I don't believe anyone was hurt. There was an ambulance there also. You've got the bike path right next to Frederica Road. If you go a little bit further down Frederica, there's a buffer between the road, obviously there, because the real estate's very valuable. The tree they're proposing taking down, that is, they actually put the bike path around it to get it away from the road. It's already a hazardous condition. Y'all are making it more hazardous. I'm not a traffic engineer, but you are. This is, this is real, live data. If they're going to have a food trucks there, I think the proposal said area for food trucks, that's even going to be more traffic. Currently, there's a food truck in Benny's parking lot at lunch a few times, and it creates a crazy situation. And I believe this site is going all the way up to the existing Benny's, which is now just a parking lot for Benny's. So, also, the gentleman mentioned about runoff. There is no impervious surface. The path, this is the last thing, and I'm done. I appreciate your time. These are all practical, real-life situations at this site, on the current location of the site. Anytime it rains hard right there, you can't even go on the sidewalk. The current, I can't believe the current owners don't fix it. I know it has to hurt their business. Their ingress egress is under approximately 10 inches of water when it rains hard. Now you're proposing making 80% more, which is already a low area on the bike path sidewalk, which is supposed to be for people to walk. And, you know, just seems highly dangerous. And usually, what, what happens in government, they put stop, they put a stop sign, they wait till someone gets killed, and then they put a traffic light. I hate to see that same thing happening here. Thank you very much this evening for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Are there any others who'd like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. I'd like to open this portion of the public hearing for those who'd like to speak in favor of CUP 5040. Anyone willing would like to come speak in favor?
Commissioners, Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering. I want to thank you two guys for your time tonight. There's a lot to talk about on this project. I want to start by saying, the, yes, the existing Friendly Express is going to go away. What, whether, what capacity of that building, if it turns into a retail, or if it's demolished and something else goes up there, I can't say, there's no, there's no, no plans for that as of, it says right now, those gas pumps will be removed. With regards to ingress and egress, we have placed, positioned that ingress in an existing access easement that is across from Ogglethorpe. That is per G dot regulations. Anytime that you have roads that are intersecting, that they want those directly across from each other. That's G dot standards. That's not ours. That's what the regulations that we follow. With regards to the conditional use permit in the application not being accurate, it's 100% accurate. There are some subjective things as to whether or not it's good for the neighborhood or not good for the neighborhood. With regards to the signage, states it clearly on the site plan exactly what the signage would be. With regards to lighting, it states it exactly what the lighting is going to be. With regards to the trees, we show exactly what we're going to do with the trees. With regards to that one tree that is in the right-of-way, we are asking that that be removed. As the gentleman very clearly pointed, it is right next to the road, and it is a safety issue, not only for traffic, but if we were going to have an access or egress next to it, it would then be in line of sight that could cause problems. I think that what we're doing is showing that northern driveway is going to be shared with Benny's, which is then going to improve their site as well, that they'll get to utilize that ingress and egress. It's no more just pulling out in the middle of the dirt road somewhere. It's going to be a very specific access for them, as well as the Friendly Express. With regards to the trees, we show exactly what we're going to do with the trees. With regards to that one tree that is in the right of way, we are asking that that be removed. As the gentleman very clearly pointed, it is right next to the road, and it is a safety issue, not only for traffic, but if we were going to have an access or egress next to it, it would then be in line of sight that could cause problems. I think that what we're doing is showing that Northern Driveway is going to be shared with Bennys, which is then going to improve their site as well, that they'll get to utilize that ingress and egress. It's no more just pulling out in the middle of the dirt road somewhere. It's going to be a very specific access for them, as well as the Friendly Express site. This site is growing. Per Glen County regulations, we have to account for a hundred percent of the water that's going to drop onto this site, which we've already accounted for. Fifty Oaks has a detention pond, that we're going to then take water. We're going to make sure that, we're going to handle water quality before it hits their pond, and then their pond is going to be able to, it's been sized according to be able to handle this development and their development. Traffic study we have, and it says what we all think it's going to say, which is, that road is a mess, whether or not they do this store or not. There is a lot of traffic there. We do not anticipate this being a destination site. That is, people are going to be coming from Brunswick to come visit this Friendly Express because it's so lovely. This is going to be a site, though, that these gentlemen are wanting to invest in this community. They have a store that's already paid for, it's already generating revenue. They don't have to do anything else, and they can generate profit. They're willing to go into debt, to borrow, to build onto this store, to be able to leave a lasting legacy for this community, so it's going to be a very nice store. The owners are here to answer any questions. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and I do ask that you approve it as it's been presented with the removal of that tree.
All right. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of CUP 5040? This is the public hearing portion of it. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor?
You'll please state your name for the record.
Bill Robinson. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We do have an old facility at the north end of the island. We've been on the island since nineteen ninety-eight, so that would put us at, what, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-four years, I guess, on this island. And what we would like to do with all the building that's been happening on the north end, you've got new developments, new houses. This site was built probably forty years ago, and we would like to replace it with something that we could be proud of. We want to be a good neighbor, and right now, we're sitting with an old store that's dated. As the gentleman mentioned, the driveways are underwater when you pull in. Now, one reason it's that way is Mr. Gentile was nice enough to let us move one driveway on the north side of the store, but we avoided that oak tree. If you wonder why it kind of jogs out to the left, we did that because we did not want to disturb those oak trees. I myself like live oaks. I've got a farm in Blackstreet, Georgia, that's loaded with live oaks. I'll even have one of your arborists come from Sea Island to look at my live oaks. This is in Blackstreet, Georgia. So I'm a live oak man. So as far as the trees, we have done our tree plan, we've done a light study, we've done a traffic study. We have spent probably fifty thousand dollars, and we could get turned down tonight. So we really got ahead of ourselves. Our civil engineer thought that that would be a good thing to do, even though we're at risk of spending this money to have this already done, to push back any opposition, anybody that thinks we're coming here like cowboys, you know, and going to do something with reckless abandonment. So I would appreciate y'all approving this. The green space, we're giving you double what we have to give you, and we did this at the recommendation of the individuals that sold us the property, or they're going to sell us the property. They wanted to do something for the community, so they required us, as part of the deal, to, what is it, forty thousand? We're doing, so got to have twenty, we got forty thousand. So, and that's for the community, you know, to have activities and all for the community. So you have seen the video, and that's what it will look like. And another thing I wanted to point out, one thing we can capture with the size of that parking lot, instead of people having to drive further down, maybe to the Circle K, it will relieve some of that traffic. So some of the people that are having to drive past us that wouldn't pull into our facility, and those of you that live on the north end of the island, I wouldn't pull in there. I'd go down to Circle K. It's easier to get in and out, it's safer, and it feels better. So, you know, we want to build this facility where you feel like pulling into our location. And you're right, with the construction workers, landscapers, plumbers, electricians, they do wrap around the building. But we'll have parking, and it'll be, you know, on paper. I wanted to mention about the lot next door, that's not our trash. You need to go walk that property and see what's sitting on that lot next door. I just walked it myself and took ten thousand pictures, okay? So I walked it just about three days ago. So while we do have people that litter, and wind will blow it next door, you've got to look what's there, sitting on this property, and I'll let it go with that. But if we're allowed to develop this project, we will keep it up, and we'll be a good neighbor, somebody you can be proud of. Thank you. Any questions for me?
No, sir. Thank you.
And we're all going to pull those tanks next door, they will be gone. Yeah, we will shut it down, that store.
This is still part of the public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of CUP 5040? Those who'd like to come and speak in favor of it. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Brantley Crosby with Friendly Express, and I would like to explain a couple of things as well. I would like to explain a couple of things. Comment was made a while ago about the dependent upon what hours we keep at the store, that the pumps would be accessible even if the store was closed, and that's not true. You can't do that in the state of Georgia. State Fire Marshal strictly does not allow that. So while we anticipate, you know, probably having an eighteen-hour store to a twenty-four-hour store there, the lighting, I've done, paid to have a photometric study done of the lighting. Our intentions are to keep the lighting twelve-foot high, no higher. At our other stores that are off the island, we go twenty-five-foot high. Canopy lights will be flat lens. All the lighting will be contained interior to the property. As you may have noticed, on the color pictures, elevations, as well as the flyby video, on the, that store is going to be an exact replica of what we have at Lith Island Highway and three forty-one. The only difference is going to be, obviously, we, the color. So we're going for something that fits the, more the island motif, similar to the station that's on Jekyll Island. We're going for the hip roof on the canopy, instead of a typical flat facade like we would do if it was a branded location. If it was a shell, this will be unbranded. Therefore, we can do what we want to do. We don't have to abide by any oil company regulations. The, as I mentioned just a second ago, this will have six dispensers versus eight. And the lighting, the lighting will be a lot more muted, contained. We are, you know, we are, we are working to save as many oak trees as we can. We've spent hours trying to adjust the geometrics of this site to make everything work. The driveways, the one, as Bill, Mr. Robinson mentioned, currently, the drive with Ogglethorpe does not line up. Well, that's one of the things that DOT would require us on a state highway, is we have to align drives. That's one thing we are going to do there. I have hired, and we have had a traffic study performed, Mr. Buckholz, who does a lot of them on the island. The study clearly said that Frederica needs a center turn lane all the way down Frederica. He told me, he said, Brantley, that's not because of your store. He said, I put that on every traffic study I perform for Frederica Road, or a property off Frederica Road. He said, so, he said, what your property is going to do there is actually going to serve two purposes. He said, it's going to be big enough that you'll be able to store more vehicles, such that they won't have to come all the way down, farther down the island, farther south. It'll keep them away from the intersection down at Sea Island. So, you know, we've put a lot of time and money and effort into trying to make sure that we analyzed it, and we looked at this thing as something not only we want, but that the community would want. So as far as the fuel system goes, we're going to be installing double-wall tanks, double-wall product lines. It's going to be, it's going to meet the stiffest regulations laid out by the EPD. So, you know, I, I think, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I filled, I did fill a lot of questions over at the IPC, but if there's no questions, I'll sit down.
It's still part of the public hearing, so if we may call you back up for some questions. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of CUP 5040? Any others who'd like to speak in favor during the public hearing portion? Hearing none, seeing none, will close that portion. Commissioners, are there any questions?
You know, the one thing I've heard here tonight is Frederica Road has to have a solution. So that means turning lane, third lane, two lanes, whatever, but that's something that's going to have to be addressed in the near future.
Well, I'm not going to be here addressing it tonight.
I understand.
I've had a request to have a two-minute adjournment, if that's okay with everyone. We'd like to have a two-minute adjourn, why don't we do a two-minute, let's do to seven forty, four-minute recess. Can I get a motion to stand in recess for four minutes to seven forty? We'll come back and open the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, motion to be in recess to seven, for four minutes, seven forty-two.
Second. A motion to have recessed till seven forty is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. We stand in recess till seven forty. Commissioners, we had just finished the public hearing portion of the meeting. We're opening the floor for discussion and questions. Do you have any questions that you would like to present to Ms. Leaf, or to ask of the applicants?
I do have a number of questions for the applicants. So Mr. Robinson and Mr. Hunt, if you both want to come back up. Thank you. Just a few things to go through. As you know, this particular piece of property that you own and its use is very unique to the north end of St. Silens. And what we decide here tonight, or change here tonight, or defer tonight, will have a long, long impact for the traffic in that area and for the access that people will want to have to get to your property. So just wanted to ask a couple quick things. First, you own the property on the existing site now, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the status of the fuel tanks that are underneath that ground at this time? Are they all good, go, no leaks, no issues there?
Everything's fine.
Okay. So there's not a, we're not looking at EVA type of cleanup, EPD cleanup next door?
No, but what we have to do, anytime you remove tanks, and of course, Brantley's expert on this, but anytime you take old tanks out of service, which we will do, you can close them in the ground or pull them. We pull them, we don't leave them. You have to take soil samples. So you take samples under the tank for them, and you have to take samples over twenty-five feet along the pipe, and so all that will be done. And either they'll come back below the levels required, or it'll say you've exceeded, and you've got to do AB and C.
Yeah. I operated Marina for twenty years with underground fuel tanks, but I just wanted for the public record.
Yes.
To make sure that the public, secure that there's no leaking going on in that property. And of course, And, of course, the, Stefan, if you can blow up the actual footprint of the property Of the plan, yeah, just, yeah, just blow it up there. Are you able to expand it at all? Yeah, keep on coming. All right. So, where are the new fuel tanks? And tell me about the fuel truck that's going to get in and out of that property.
I got you.
I don't know if you can give him a, do we have a laser he can point to or anything like that?
Okay. I can walk up to the board. Brantley's going to show you exactly where those new fuel tanks are, and I can show you ingress and egress for the fuel trucks. There's a mouse right there, Brantley, you're going to use that.
And what size fuel truck do you see servicing those tanks? What size are the new tanks going to be? What size are your new tanks going to be?
Sir?
What size will your new fuel tanks be in the new property?
For that particular location, we're probably looking at, for the unleaded tank, you're probably looking at somewhere between a 12,000 gallon and a 20,000 gallon tank, which is in line with what we've been putting like at a Friendly 71, which is at 341 in Blath Island.
And the current size tank in the other property next door?
The current size tank is a 10,000 gallon.
And the other tanks that are going in there?
So, we have a, right now, we have a regular, a premium, and a diesel. Okay? And what we've got is the unleaded, I believe, is a 10, and the premium and the diesel are a five and a five. And the new site, we really haven't gotten to the point of even deciding what size tanks, but I would anticipate that there'll be at least, the unleaded will at least be a 12, we'll have a premium, we'll have a diesel, and then we'll probably add marine ethanol at this particular location.
Just got to vote.
So, you're looking at, what I'm currently doing at a new facility we're building in Darien is a 20,000 gallon unleaded. I'm doing a 6,000 gallon, I'm sorry, I'm doing a 10 premium, a 10 diesel, and we're not doing marine there. So, you're probably looking at about a five. It'll probably be more like a five, five, and a five. So, five, five premium, five diesel, five marine.
And, oh, did it go offline? I'll wait till she gets the footprint back up. And this is just extra scrutiny because of this particular property that you have and the operation you have? You've been, you know, reliable owners and good operators there, and I understand that upgrade.
So, with regards to the ingress and egress of the fuel truck, one of the comments from county engineering was us to be able to approve this through a program called auto turn. So, we ran auto turn on a full-size semi truck to be able to come in and make these turns, to be able to access it. We've added larger radiuses on the ingress and egress. That's why part of it, we're having to ask for that tree removal, is because it's eating into some of that ingress and egress that we need. Larger radius means we got into where the tree is. The auto turn has ran perfectly. Mr. Crosby, Brantley, had said at one point that they've had a, their fuel trucks got in and out of their current site pretty well. I'm like, well, I don't think I could prove that on an auto turn on your existing site. However, I know that they get in there with it. So, this is much larger radiuses, much larger drive aisles. Each one of those drive aisles on the ingress and egress, instead of being a standard 10 or 12-foot width, we're going with 14-foot on all of them, so that we'll be able to accommodate any trucks or trailers that people are towing in, as well as the boats that will now be coming because of the marine fuel. I think it would be good, made it, plenty of parking for those extra trailers and added areas for them to be able to stage.
So, where will the fuel tanks be?
They're going to be located right there between the canopy and the header curb closest to the road.
So, when that truck pulls in, where is he sitting to fuel those tanks?
So, he's going to, he's going to come into the north drive, pull in, and then we drop on the passenger side. So, he'll come in and he'll be part of, between the curb and the canopy, such that what we'll do is we'll have the drops closest to the curb there, that when he pulls in there, he's protecting his drops. So, in other words, people can't drive between the truck and the curb.
Okay. So, he's pulling inside on the roadside of your dispenser?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then, and that'll allow him access to be able to come out here and come out to the left and go south.
And the property, just again, so people know, the property that you currently have is to the left of this designer or the south side?
Yes, sir. Sitting right here.
And I understand that you're going to have about 49 parking spaces? Is that what you're saying in the application? Well, you know, that place is jammed with landscapers and trailers and people lunching in there, and how are you providing for that crowd pushing into your property?
As far as the parking? The parking, okay. So, what, if you notice here, if you look at the parking behind, so the food truck parking, that's, that would typically, the reason we have this parking right here is for weekend events. So, anything that we're doing or that will be in the green space, we're allowing for vehicles to be able to park on our parking and not be getting out on the grass with vehicles, okay? So, whether it be Christmas time and there be Christmas trees, you know, set up down there, or whatever it may be, we're trying to allow such that it doesn't disturb landscaping and the grass and so forth. But, so, all this parking behind the store will be available, as well as this parking out here and over here will be available for the boats, trucks, landscapers, trailers. We realize we do a, we have a lot of traffic in this store on a lunchtime daily basis, early in the morning, breakfast, and that's, that's, as well as the way we've designed the ingress and egress here, as Brian mentioned, what we've done is instead of just having a straight in and out, we've allowed for that right turn, left turn, which is going to allow congestion out to move to the north without having to stack and block back into the property. So, the idea is to try to, you know, to make the property where it's fluid.
And the square footage dimensions of your store compared to your other store next?
Um, so, that one is 4,700. The other store is, is 2,500 on the convenience store part, and then the side cart there is, I want to say, another 750 to 1,000. I can't, I can't recall exactly. It's the same depth, but obviously nowhere near as wide.
And the store entrance, I'm just trying to get a vision of the activity. Is that the only entrance in the front, or is it front rear access?
Yes, sir. There will be, the back exit will be, the back exit will be for emergency, to meet the life safety plan. It will be, it will be right there. And we use, we use that drive, or that access for access to the dumpster, as well as for delivery of goods. So, they'll be able to come in and be checked in through that point, instead of having to come in through the front and being, you know, creating confusion or with the customers.
You're going to have a lot of people moving in and around, so, but they're all going to go up to the front and go in then?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The entrance for, the customers will be right there.
And then what is the leg, is that a driveway out to the adjoining property?
Back here?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there, there is an easement, there's an existing easement that comes down to, I can't see it, is it right there? Okay. There's an existing easement that's been there from the time before the store was even built. And then what's happened is, part of the requirement for 50 Oaks is for them to have an emergency egress. So, their entrance comes in off of South Harrington, but they have to have an emergency egress out of 50 Oaks, and the egress will be, there will be a continued easement between our existing property and the 50 Oaks property, which will provide that easement.
Is that an unopened gate going in?
Yes, sir. It will be unopened.
To 50 Oaks? I mean, is that an egress and access, emergency exit?
It's just emergency access, unimproved emergency access.
All right.
One other thing I wanted to mention that I forgot to mention as well is, we're going to have a generator at this site, too. That way, what was, several years ago, when everybody was locked off from the mainland over there, we saw the need for that as well. We were putting that at all of our new stores, and we felt like this would be a prime location for the generator support as well for, even for emergency responders and so forth, so on.
So, it looks like to me that the property to the south that you currently have, whatever you do with that, it looks like exit out of that property is going to be on your gas station exits. Is that going to be a shared exit? Is that the plan?
Yes, yes, sir.
There's an existing easement that's there already, that they're going to continue.
Well, what my thoughts are, and this is what we had drawn and in talking with the traffic engineers, well, when we remove the tanks for the old site, we're considering and intend to close the south drive. So, the net effect of drives will be, there'll be no more drives than there already are. Okay? So, we're going to close the south drive, and then everything that comes out of our existing property will exit through here or through that driveway.
Okay. I just, A, wanted to get questions answered. I wanted the public to clearly see and understand what the plans were and what was going to be happening on that property, because you're it. I mean, I don't foresee any other fuel station going north of where you're at. Not saying that's not possible in the future, but you're it. It's critical access. Building will continue on that end of the island, so the traffic into your property is going to continue to be huge. I just have a lot of concerns with the amount of traffic in and out of there and the safety of all that. But that answers my questions for the moment. Thank you.
What's the difference in the impervious surface, the old location and the new location, square footage? You may have covered that, and I just missed it.
You can, you can explain that.
Yep, I got you. So, the impervious, it's quite a bit different. They have, well, they have a lot of gravel, which is considered mostly impervious by this time. I think at some point, when gravel goes in, it's 50% impervious pervious, but as the gravel gets compacted, it essentially turns the pavement. Our, Ms. Leaf's trying to zoom in so we can see the exact, the exact amount of surface coverage that we're showing. I think it's roughly around 60%. I've got it right here. It is, we're at 48.57 impervious percent and 51% pervious. So, we have more pervious area than impervious area on this site.
Versus the old site?
So, the old site is considerably more. I mean, the old site is...
Considerably more impervious.
Oh, yes, sir. Then the, then what?
Are you referring to our old site or the existing?
No, I'm referring to your old store.
To the old gas station, yes, sir. It's, well, it's considerably larger land, a much larger development from what we're trying to provide. I think part of what Mr. Fendig has said is that, is, you know, concerned with the traffic, it's already an issue with the existing store. There's a lot of traffic that goes there. I think with what we're trying to do here is to give them more area to be able to, to have for parking and staging and storing and trucks to come in and out, and, you know, equipment and vendors and all of the other sorts. One thing was discussed at the Island Planning Commission is whether we could reduce our impervious surface coverage by trying to use pervious material, but since this is a gas station, it's not recommended that we use that. We need to be able to clean it up if there was a spill.
Mr. Chairman, I'm able to approve CUP...
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we can second.
Well, let's go ahead and let Commissioner Booker have his question.
Are you planning to have security cameras in the back of the building?
We will have security cameras all over this place. Yes, sir. We have, and we do it primarily from a liability standpoint, as well as a security feature, okay? Just as far as someone getting hurt and then, you know, claiming that they got hurt, but nobody knowing whether they got, you know, whether it was, so, yes, sir, there will be, there will be probably at this site within about 32 cameras located in and around the store.
I have one question, and I have no reason to doubt this, that you have made the statement that you're going to remove the old tanks in the current location. Do you have a timeframe on when that may happen? Is it 12 months, 24 months? Have you even thought through that at all?
I can say this, our plan would be to build the new facility, open the new facility, and immediately go pull those tanks. So, it's just as soon as we were able to satisfy the demand with the new facility, we would go and pull. And then, and then more likely, we'll be, we'll be trying to make some paving tie-ins and, you know, just try to make everything flow from the old property to the new property.
I assume, Brian, that if there are some changes on the old property, the current location where we do have flooding issues, and particularly on the northern entrance, that would be addressed at that time when any new?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I think that, you know, if they're still the current owner, they're going to have to manage and maintain whatever drainage that's there. If they sell that location to somebody else, then obviously we come back through site plan and civil plan and all the other stuff, and they'll have to meet drainage requirements then.
Well, one other thing. The pond, part of our agreement with 50 Oaks was that the new development, as well as our old, their holding pond design would be able to, would be capable of holding the water generation from both properties. We know we have a problem. That's another, that's one of the other reasons we want to do this, is this is our way of resolving the issues we have at the old store. But that was part of the understanding between us and 50 Oaks is that, in fact, it was a major, it was a deal killer. If we weren't able to dump this water into their pond, then we wouldn't do it.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'm able to approve CUP 5040, as presented, including removal, approval to remove the county's 22-inch live oak tree located within the right-of-way of Frederica Road adjacent to the subject property.
Second. I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Rofalski.
Just one other question.
Any other discussion?
Just one other question for all. So, the fueling, as you will have it set up, means that that's a 24/7 fueling operation, right?
Only if the store is open. So...
Well, you were talking about here in the notes that the, when the store is closed, they'll be able to fuel with...
I'm not sure how that, I don't know where that came from, because state fire marshal will not allow us to sell gas if the store is closed. It doesn't matter with, yeah, we have card readers... have card readers, but you cannot sell gas. We have to disable them if we, if the store is closed.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, that's statewide. I've, I have people all the time asking me to do that. At, because I put in gas systems for a living, and that's one of the things I have to argue with people about. But you can do it in Florida, you cannot do it in Georgia.
All right, Commissioners, any other further, further discussion? We have a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I didn't hear the motion. Was it the first or the second?
No.
Thank you.
Could you please read it one more time for the record, Mr. Brunson, Commissioner Brunson?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve CUP five zero four zero as presented, including approval to remove the county's twenty-two inch live oak tree located within the right of way of Frederica Road adjacent to the subject property.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? It passes five, one, and those who abstain, or you're recused, is that correct? Okay. Let me state that again for the record. Five in favor, one against, and one recused. Motion passes. Mr. Chairman, I give you back the gavel.
That will complete our agenda for tonight. Uh, we do have reason for executive session for the-
Pending litigation.
I'm sorry?
Pending litigation.
And we have exec, a motion to go into executive session for pending litigation. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I move, we go to executive session for pending litigation.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, second by Commissioner Tosterson to go into executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We stand in with six.